Okay, welcome everybody to our regular meeting for the City Council of City Perry. Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order and have roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldiron.
Here.
Rock.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
For them.
Here. Alright, we've got Quorum. Tonight, our invocation is by Ronnie Wilson. So if you can offer that for us and tell us about the big old sign you got up front.
Yes, sir. I try to not dismiss you after prayer this time.
Okay, we're fine with that.
Yeah, well, y'all were, but I don't think you'd have got anything done. So I am Ronnie Wilson on the Campus Pastor at Life 180 here in Perry, Oklahoma. We are, God's doing great things with us. We are just growing. We're seeing people be baptized, people be saved, and we're thankful for that. We do have a big sign up at the road that you speak of. It says "At the Movies." Each July, we do something called "At the Movies." We are an open network of Life Church out of Edmund, Oklahoma. Most people know that there's a campus in Stillwater, of course, in Oklahoma here. But what we do is something called "At the Movies," and we take a movie and we'll take four or five just clips out of that, about four or five minutes long, and we'll show those, and then I'll pull the biblical truths out of those and tie them together in the end of it. Normally, what it causes is hopefully for someone to feel actually moved by God, but also it makes you want to go home and watch that movie in the end. I see that often. People say, "I've never seen that. I've got to go find it." We just watched one this last week that was "Here Comes the Boom," and I pulled spiritual truths out of that. If you've ever seen that movie, you're probably saying, "How on earth did you do that?" Well, it took a little while, but it was a good movie. It kept everyone's attention. And our goal really as a church is to reach the lost and the unchurched as a whole in Perry. There's a lot of people that attend other churches, and as a church, as the pastor of our church, we're for the First Baptist, the Church of Christ, the Nazarene. I'm for all of those. And when I talk to someone and they tell me I go to church somewhere, I tell them, "That's good. Keep going to church." Our goal at Life 180 is to reach those in Perry that are not attending church, and there's hundreds, if not thousands, of those still. So we use methods that are untraditional to try to actually reach those people is what we do. We don't change the message. We just change the way we deliver the message is what we do. So if you don't have a church home, you are always welcome to come visit us at Life 180. So we would love to have you. But I'm going to pray, and I'm going to leave and get out of here and let you guys get to business. So, dear only Father God, I come to you and I thank you, God, just for who you are and what you're doing in our lives and in our city. And God, I thank you for all these men and women and their dedication to be here, God. And I just pray you give them clarity and wisdom as they make decisions, God, that in all the decisions they make will bring honor and glory to you, and that we'll just keep growing as a city and as a community, and that everything we do will just bring honor and glory to you, God. I pray you just help them with their health and just everything in life that they have in front of them, God, whatever struggles they may be going through. I just pray that you would wrap your arms around them and they would feel your presence even now, God. We love you and we praise you. I ask you to forgive me where I fail you, and it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Alright, let's jump right in with item number one, our concern agenda.
Motion to approve concern agenda.
Sound good.
Second. And coffee.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldiron.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
For them.
Yes. Okay, item number four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda, persons presenting their concerns or comments. Amen. Alright. Item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries by the governing body. So we've got our ward reports. Let's go ahead and start with Ward One. Scott, welcome back.
The only thing I've gotten, I worked on a house across from this area, and then I had a citizen call was for the mobile home that we moved on Delaware, just wanting to know what actions are in place to maybe get that cleaned up. And it is holding a lot of water this time of year with some mosquito breeding ground, and I just wanted to know what we're doing to try to get that cleaned up.
In terms of the property itself and the drainage, nothing. It's private property, but in terms of the mowing and some of that, just light maintenance, we've issued an order for them to clean it up. We obviously know that's not going to happen, which will then give us the opportunity to go and do it.
Is there anything we can put in the water to maybe help minimize mosquitoes or?
Not really. I mean, a private property, you can't walk into some property and drop chemicals.
Tell my head. Alright, thank you, Scott. Shay.
No.
No. Joe.
Awesome. I was just able to go up to the link on the fourth, and it was great to see the community out there, so just wanted to thank Derek again for the many, many years of doing that. It's awesome to see everybody out there and just having a good time.
Nice. Still got all your fingers?
I did, I just watched.
Oh, you just read the same. Good to see you. Alright, thank you, Austin. Danette.
Just no one approached me directly because we know nobody talks to me. There is a concern on the fee schedule for animal control. Or if you have a lost dog and someone turns it into animal control, the automatic fine, it goes with that, how high it is. There's not like a first, then second, then third, and it's a same thing all the time. And the perception is, is not everyone gets charged as. Just something's off.
It's absolutely something I can look at. It's been on my list for a long time is to evaluate the fee schedule and see kind of where we sit compared to other cities. So I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I'll definitely take a look and see. I think it's probably common in a lot of towns to have kind of a first, second, third, like you were describing. So I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danette. Randy.
I don't believe I have anything.
Derek.
The only thing I've had several questions on is the work on Seventh Street. Do we have an updated? I know they've started now, but.
Yeah, we needed a post on it today, and I just didn't get around to instructing staff to do that. The culverts, because of all the flooding that's been going on all over the state and really, you know, nation, were held up quite a long time. We didn't get them until Friday of last week, and so we've started on that project, but it has put a little bit of a delay in when we'll get that done. So we'll post on Facebook tomorrow and let people know kind of an ETA there.
I do.
Same. Beat you to it?
Yep.
Alright, next time you'll go first.
We're named a toss.
Alright, I believe that's all we have, so we'll go ahead and move on. We're going to move some items around, though. And so we're going to skip down to item number nine, which is received presentation of quarterly report and the master plan from Main Street Perry. So what time is yours?
I will, these are my friends from GH2.
Hello, friends.
They just, I thought they'd been here before, and they went on a journey to get here, so it's fine.
Sorry.
No, I'm glad you're here. I'll do my report, and then we can, they have some big things, big printouts that we can go ahead and look at too. So I was just going to go over a few things that we've been doing and a few things that we have coming up. We do have a few events coming up this month. We have changed our, we usually do the lemonade stands for the kids in the summer. We are going to work with some of the businesses that do like a crazy day sale and try to incorporate that with them. So that's going to be the last weekend of July. I think Lauren said they're running it the last week, so we're going to get that posted soon. We are doing our meet-a-maroo night on August 7th, which is usually a Thursday night, and I think we're starting at 7:30 again because it seems to be so hot. We are, had a meeting today about the street dance. I think we are potentially moving it to maybe Saturday if we can get that. This year is very unique because it's not only a home football game, it is homecoming at a home, on a home football game the night before the celebration. And as much as we love doing the street dance, we don't want people to have to choose. I mean, I don't even want to have to choose like what we're going to do. So this year's going to be a little different. We might change it up, see if we like it. Really, the, at the end of the day, the purpose of the street dance is still to bring people downtown and support businesses, and if it ends up being such a late event, nothing's open, it really kind of defeats the whole purpose of doing it. So there was talk about maybe we just start it early late, but then, then we're like, or we just pick a different weekend. So we already have the bands booked, and so we're just waiting to make sure that all of them can attend and that everything can happen. So that's kind of still to be determined. We will have our local banquet in October, and then the state banquet is going to be, I think, the end of September. And we did get all of our nominations submitted, and then we got the announcement last week of, we did make it in the top three for a few awards, and so we will announce those next week. We haven't, or this week sometime, we haven't got all those together to be posted. We are still doing our facade grants. We still have applications available, so anybody that has a downtown business. And we also have our new business grant, which is for any new business that is opening up. So we still have all that information in our office. We did use some of the facade grant money to purchase the brackets for the, all the light poles for the banners, so that came from some of our facade and beautification money. And then the senior banners were a collaboration between some parents and Main Street and Red Earth, so we were thankful that we got to do those and looking forward to more banners around downtown. We are currently working with Old Home Rescue. They are just a company that has been really vital to us as coming into town and showing us very important things on old buildings, and we are going to work on getting them here and doing like a historic facade grant luncheon, like a luncheon learn, so people can kind of learn more about different things that they can do on their buildings that aren't so costly. I know some of these companies you bring in, they're just very expensive when you start looking at historic things, but they recently have hired a lady from this, she used to work for the State Historic Preservation Office, and she's, we've met with her on different things, but she's so knowledgeable, and so I feel like that can be something that we can offer to building owners where they can learn and maybe be able to do things on their own without having to pay such a hefty price tag. We finished all of the downtown sound system. It is completely installed. We are making one change tomorrow. They're coming back to add in another power amp. They, some of the businesses all run off of one power amp, and some offices don't like it to come on until a certain time, but then some people are like, "Well, I want mine on all day long." So we're just going to add one more so that on one side of the square, like right now, I feel like the north side isn't on at all until after 5:00, so now some of it will be on. It's really more retail places like it, and then more business offices want it on after 5:00, so kind of working through a few kinks, but for the main part, it's all finished and installed. And then the permanent lighting is the second phase will be starting hopefully in the next month or so. We did have to work with Haley Collins on our board and did a contract, and not really anything like terrible in the contract, other than we just want the building owners to know that we will help work with them if they need to get their roof replaced or take something off, because we've already had a situation where they, the reverse took them off, and then we weren't sure if they got installed back correctly. And so we just want to be a part of that process, not necessarily anything other than like, "Let's help you," or maybe we can, we just want, if we pay for it all, we just want it to last a little while. And same with the sound. We just don't want people like cutting wires that are on their roof, not knowing what they are, and then realizing later that, "Oh, that was the power to the speaker." So that's the contracts that we've been sending out. So that is all on our facade and beautification preservation projects. Trying to think if there's anything else that was like big that was happening other than this. This is our next, this is our next thing that Main Street's working on is our downtown project, so kind of go ahead and skip to that. We, this was just something that we had, has been on our minds for a while, that we were kind of passionate about, and we met with the Mauson Foundation probably two years ago, and we had applied for a grant just to kind of get concept drawings and kind of see like what could we do within the downtown. And I'll have Peyton. So this is Peyton, they're with GH2 Architects, and Tyler Wallace with Todd, and they have been amazing. And we have formed a committee within Main Street. Some of them are board members, some of them are volunteers, and some of them are just community members. And we have, we first walked around the downtown, and then we were able to brainstorm kind of what we wanted to do. So currently, the grant we got from the foundation was to start this process of a drawing, 3D renderings, and just like putting all our, all our ideas together. So last month, we took this drawing that we've finalized, and then we also took some 3D renderings, and we submitted it to the Toro Green Space Grant, and we were approved for that. So we officially have some money to start. So here we go. And this is a project that is heavily involves the county, and so we have been working hand in hand with them since the beginning of it. We actually have met with them multiple times, and they've kind of said, "Yes, we like this," or "No, we don't like that." Wit Todd's came with us and kind of listened to what they felt like was important to them and the safety and security aspect of it. And so if you, if you look at the, this picture that we finally landed on, I think, I don't know how many we got, we had before this one. It includes moving the courthouse drive and changing the sidewalks. Everybody decided that they really love walking the sidewalks within the downtown square and thought kind of changing it to more of a circle or oval shaped. The roundabout around the fountain is just a space that the fountain, the bandstand, and the wellhouse, and the little piece beside the wellhouse are all listed on the National Registry, so they are things that cannot be touched or moved. They can be kind of cleaned up, fixed up, but we can't actually like take them down and move them, and so those pieces, pieces will stay there. Do you guys want to, do you guys want to talk about it for a minute? Do you want to like explain any of that? I mean, I don't mind, but I feel like you're there and you're, you guys are so good at all those.
So beyond not touching the original bandstand, the wellhouse, and the fountain there, we wanted to provide a better parking situation for those at the county building. So we moved it down to the south to kind of open up that site for use for city festivals, people walking through the area, but we wanted to observe the parking right outside the county courthouse for those who, who want to be like right in front of the building. And through some, some work with Main Street, we determined that the bandstand is just not going to serve the city needs as well as we would like it to. So our idea was to create a new stage up at the northwest corner of the site with tear seating and open lawn space for, for the use of the city and all the performances. And then at the original bandstand, the idea hasn't been pushed out specifically what that kids' play area would be, but it could be open lawn space, maybe a couple of playground equipment, but something to kind of serve the library that's there, any families coming to the site for a concert, but also preserve that area around the bandstand as sort of an important community aspect. Is there anything else?
I don't know. I hear that's good. The, the second page, and I don't know how many pages you guys have with the renderings, those aren't anything that's completely official. Those are all just ideas, just to kind of like get a, get a more visual of what it could be. There's been talk about what kind of pavers would we really want right there between the library and the post office? Is that what we would want it to look like? We're, that's still undetermined. And somebody had made the comment that they felt like the stage needed to complement the bandstand and the wellhouse more in the picture. I mean, so none of this is really like, yes, it's just like to kind of get more of a visual of what it, of what it could look like. We, we met with the county this morning, and it will be definitely a situation where we will kind of look at like, we asked them kind of like who will hold the contracts and where will the money come from? It will, even though Main Street will get the money through the grants, it'll definitely, since it's all heavily county property, it'll have to go, go through them. So that is just something that we're still kind of working through, and how many, how many bids we'll have to get on each thing, as well as maybe some of the projects that we've estimated cost for could be things that the county and the city could work together on, maybe using the equipment that we already have to keep some of our costs down instead of bringing somebody in to do all that. With the Toro Green Space Grant, it does have to be focused more on like the green space portion of it. So as we, as we move forward, we will have to like break it down into phases, and like what's phase one and what's phase two. And in the eyes of Main Street, we, we would love to have the stage and the parking lot moved first. We feel like those are the two, two bigs that we feel like need to move. But also, I mean, with that, you're looking at like the electric and the infrastructure and other things that need to be changed too. As we look into 2026, we will get the, we already have secured the Toro Green Space Grant. We've already met with the Mauson Foundation again, and they are, they're definitely willing to work with us, and they're excited about the project. And then with Main Street, we can get up to $150,000 annually with the new Main Street incentive grant. So we are hopeful that starting in January, we'll have a good chunk to, to get going, so. So that's, that's that. Do you have any questions or comments for?
So you said you'd have a good chunk ready, does that mean like in January, you'll start?
Yeah, I mean, we will. We'll have, so like with the Main Street incentive grant, it has to be spent between January and December of next year. So however we look at that. And then, right now, we're just going to the Mauson Foundation for a matching grant, so we'll, they have to match that one, and then we're going to ask them to match the Toro Grant. So with both of those, we'll start there, and then within like January of next year, once we, we met with GH2 two weeks ago, and we kind of looked at like what, what are our phases, like what, what do we want to start with? And then the very first thing that we're going to have to do is a big survey, so we haven't got that secured yet, but once we get a big survey done of everything that we can, where we can start and what's underground everywhere, so. Yeah, so we're hopeful for that, and then there's other grants that we can get and we can go after. We haven't, we haven't got there yet, but we plan on finding all of them.
But right now, the parking lot and the new bandstand would be your?
Yeah, I think, the sad thing is like the, the parking lot's probably going to have to kind of be moved at the beginning, I think, because in order to open that green space, it kind of goes at an angle when you get to the north side, so if you were to add that stage, you're still confined to a smaller green space on that. With the roundabout, the county really had been looking into some way making the courthouse more safe and secure. Right now, they, they have entrances on all four sides, and they've talked about narrowing it down to like where the sheriff's department had an entrance, and then the public had an entrance, and making the parking lot entrance ADA accessible, and so that, that would, would help with a lot of that. So yeah, I think that we, we talked today about how we liked the working maybe towards the, the parking lot and the new stage before we really did much to the old. the, the parking lot and the new stage before we really did much to the old bandstand and changing it.
So this is probably a multi-year project?
Yeah. I mean, we don't want it to be tore up next, we don't want things to be in disarray next September for the celebration. Like that, we would like to not have like parking lot and things completely tore up then. But it will have to be multi-year if we continue to go after the Main Street incentive grant. So yes, cause that's only annually.
Laura, this may be a Main Street question or maybe GH2 knows. With, um, that deadline for ARPA funding being spent, having to be spent early 2026, is any of that money freeing up? Don't mean to put you on the spot, Todd.
That's not who you're talking to. I think, um, we, we have heard that some of it's freeing up, but I don't know what they're planning to do.
Yeah, and I think that like depending on like how the, which grants we get and running them through the county, like some of them, some of them were a little bit like different, whether they're federal grants or state grants or local grants. So that was, that was discussed this morning as well.
Laura, on this, the first thing I want to say is just thank you for all the hard work you put into it. I love this idea, I think it's awesome. One question I have is we've talked a couple of times about possibly having outdoor restroom facilities. I think the concern is, the idea would be to attract more people, um, doing this, right? And the only place they have to go to the restroom right now will be inside the library, which a lot of events aren't really conducive to that.
Yeah.
Have you guys talked a little bit more about that and where you?
Yeah, we discussed that this morning and that, uh, even the county had mentioned that they, they opened the courthouse for all of our, um, all of our events and they're willing to do it, but there's always the, the discussion of how bad they are at the end of the event and how many people came in and there, there's nobody in there. So like on the celebration or even at our small events, like nobody's in the courthouse, they're just coming in and so it's not really secure. So they were, they were like of the idea to like where, what are we gonna do with the restrooms? Adding them on to the wellhouse, which I think is kind of hard to see in that little picture of that building where they keep their storage, but they have water in that area and?
So it's this one here or the last one?
Yeah. And so we had discussed and I think I had mentioned back to GH2 about how we would like to possibly add in some bathrooms in that area. Whether they were, um, and then we talked about that, would they be open all year? Would we lock them? And they felt like they would need to be maybe unlocked for events, but they would need to be available to be used all year because like if you think of Christmas events and things that are more, um, seasonal, we wouldn't wanna, um, we wouldn't wanna winterize them, we'd want them to be available.
Yeah, I think you and I had chatted that, um, I, I'm totally willing to talk to the county and volunteer our staff to, to assist in the cleaning if that's a concern, but having that up, I think.
It didn't seem to, but I think that's a good, a good collaboration because I feel like we even had somebody on, on our committee that was like, I'll clean the bathrooms.
Yeah.
And I was like, okay. So I think that, I think that's a good, a good addition to that when we get to that space too. And there was another discussion about the company that does our, our sound system. If we were to have like a heating and cooled space, they could do the sound system that could like stay there. So it'd be easy for bands to plug in, but I feel like that's, that's just gonna be something that we walk through when we get there and maybe it could be added on the next phase, but at this point it's not like a huge priority, priority to us, so. But creating like a, a bigger entryway between the post office and the library and making the roundabout around the, um, the, uh, water feature space where it is now currently to the gazebo are definitely two, two things that we want.
So you mentioned that the fountain, the water feature?
So it used to be a fountain and we have an old picture of it.
Is there something in the plan to make it like a fountain again or just?
We'd say water feature, but that's still open ended. Like, I don't know that we want it to be like what it was. Like we have pictures of it like, like waist high, I think completely filled with water like, and I don't know how many years ago that was. And I assume it was not safe, so they made it into a gazebo.
Or, or it was hard to maintain.
Well, that too, yeah. And so with that, like as, as each piece, as we get to work on each phase, we'll make more decisions and pick things as we get, get there. Um, Patty with the Parks Department is a part of this and so she's been a great, a great asset to have. And then we have somebody from the county and then just a few people within the community that, that have met with us and, and gave their thoughts and.
What is your dream date, finish date?
I don't even know, we've talked about that, have we? It's just our dream that it's happening.
It's getting started.
I mean, we did have one of our board members say that somebody from Toro was gonna be here in September that was a part of the Green Space Grant. And she was like, can we do a groundbreaking? And I was like, oh gosh, like we can pretend and like take a picture. I was like, I don't know. I don't really know with the grants, like with these, I mean, I'm gonna say yes for 2026, we're gonna have them, but will we have anything by September? I don't know that we will.
It's coming up pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Great job, Laura.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This, this is fantastic.
We just hope that it, that it just encourages more, more events and more people and more, more exciting things.
The block party was very fun.
Oh, yes, the block party was. Sorry, I felt like I was so focused on this, I felt like we, yeah. Our block party brought in a lot of people and it was, uh, the, the band that played was great, the wax yard was, they were cool, they were fun. I tried to get them back in like two months around the celebration and they're like booked. Yeah, we'll get them back though.
But that block party reminds me that, and, and the picture, that, that Kid Zone or whatever that you've got pictured there, that is an oven.
Mm-hmm.
And so more trees you can put into that, the best.
I felt like the whole, like if you just sit, and that's another thing with changing the, the way the, uh, stage faces. If you sit in those bleachers right on, nobody sits there, nobody sits right in front of the stage. And I even noticed with their sound, we asked them to turn their speakers, cause everybody was under the shade trees and it was just, you were roasting in the front, so.
Well, way, way back when, there were more trees there.
Yeah.
Anyway, I've been told.
Oh, we have pictures. So a part of this, we had like a whole file of all historic pictures and the courthouse and where the old drive used to be and the sidewalks have been changed since where they are now. Like it's, it's changed a lot, so.
This is beautiful.
Yes.
Wasn't all me, there's a lot of us. I'll take the credit tonight. It took, it took a whole, a whole group of us, so. Yeah, well, thank you guys.
Yep, pass along to the committee, we're ready to be a part of it.
Okay.
We're excited.
Thank you guys.
All right, so that was item number nine. Now we're gonna skip down to item number 13. We're gonna jump around a little bit. All right, item 13, consider agenda items pertaining to ordinance number 2025-12. A, receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission on ordinance number 2025-12. B, consider approval of ordinance number 2025-12 of the City Council of City Perry Oklahoma, amending chapter 12, article 2, division 3 of the Perry Municipal Code by the addition of a new section 12-233 entitled "Front Yard and Rear Yard Carports", providing per specific provisions relating to carports which may be administratively approved, providing for repealer, savings, codification, severability, penalty, and clearing in emergency. And we'll do item C after we discuss this one. So where do we get on this one? What's the recommendation?
So you're talking B, right?
Yeah, A, A is to receive the recommendation, B is, we'll approve it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, the recommendation from the Planning Commission on this one was, uh, initially to table it in the thought process, there was, there were a couple of things that needed to be worked out, um, that David Payne had actually recommended. We went back as staff, worked those out. Um, and I was talking to Brad this morning, we felt comfortable enough to, to bring this to council. Um, so whole idea behind this carport ordinance is to make it easier, um, and more streamlined and, uh, just more possible for residents to build carports in their, in their yards. Um, with the weather we've had in Oklahoma, even since I've just moved in a year and a half ago, um, lots of hail, lots of car damage. And one of my vehicles has already been damaged by hail and, um, making that process difficult to protect your vehicle is just, we as staff didn't feel like it was, uh, it was right. We wanted to make that easier. And so this ordinance allows that to happen by making the setbacks not as far, um, and just streamlining that process.
Got you. All right. So with that, we do have some folks that are here for this item. Was there anything that, that y'all wanted to say or throw in?
Different item.
Oh, different item, okay. Not here for the carports, okay. So council, any thoughts?
I guess my question, maybe streamlined, what are we, what are we taking out of the process?
Well, currently, if you want a carport, you pretty much have to go to the Board of Adjustment. Because, because it won't meet the setbacks. You know, it's considered a structure and, and it won't meet the front yard, the front yard setback, which means that the people have to file an application. They have to get all the neighbors within 300 feet. They have to pay an application fee. They have to pay for a publication notice, which is inconsequential. Uh, they have to pay for the mailing and they come in and they're allowed to construct a, you know, eight hundred dollar carport in, in front of their house to protect their car. In fact, you know, setbacks on carports were like one of the main things that the Board of Adjustment did, you know? Uh, if they don't have sides on them and they don't create, you know, uh, traffic, uh, visual problems, uh, we're just thinking that, you know, in 2025, particularly with the weather as it has been, it's certainly not getting better, doesn't seem to be, that people shouldn't have to go through that whole process. So we looked at other ordinances and, and, uh, and how, you know, this would be permitted by right. You know, if it meets these terms, it gets permitted by right. You still have to get a permit and a permit fee and we've gotta make sure that it meets these terms. But, uh, that's, that's kind of what it, it, uh, it, it provides. It's, uh, it's community friendly and, and we don't think that, uh, that if, if you follow these provisions, we don't think that there's anything adverse. Now, you know, your neighbor's not gonna get notified that you wanna put a carport up in your front yard. I mean, that's what it isn't gonna be and I suppose I'd say, you know, maybe so what? But if you think different, then you should be opposed to this, this ordinance and you should require it to go through the, through the Board of Adjustment for purposes of getting those, uh, you know, meeting those setbacks. So we're really providing for, uh, different setbacks which we will work.
So Randy, to answer your question, to, to change the setbacks is to streamline, cause they don't then have to go through all that process. As you can see, this is something Bryce is really passionate about. It's been something that he's wanted, wanted done for a long time and I agree, it'll be a, a blessing to the ci, the residents of Perry.
Why did we have it like that before, where you had to do so much?
Well, I mean, if, if, if a carport is considered a structure, if all zoning districts have setbacks, you know, and, uh, and then, and then there's no, we don't have special exceptions. You can provide for special exceptions under the zoning laws, we've just never done that, you can. And so in order to get a rule, uh, amended, you know, a round peg fitting in a square hole, you had to go through the, through the Board of Adjustment. Now I will tell you that there's a procedure on the Board of Adjustment called Minor Variances, okay, which I've recommended in prior years to the Board of Adjustment for just this, that wouldn't require as much procedure, okay? But that never, that never caught fire. So I'm trying to do it in a different way. Uh, just because I'm emphatic, you know, I see cars with hailstones on them and it's just, man, you know, uh, people, people use their garage for something different now as additional living space and storage and, uh, I just think that these are important. Uh, it, it's, it's in an AGRG or, or R1, single family district. So, you know, i- if it doesn't work, can we get complaints? We can always come back and, and look at it again, but, uh, I think it's community friendly.
The only thing I've thought of recently, um, we account for sidewalks in the ordinance, but we've also got some grants recently to add some sidewalks where there maybe wasn't previously. How would that be handled if someone had a carport and we got a grant to do the sidewalk down that street?
We actually adjusted the, that was one of the issues that David Payne brought up. And so we adjusted the ordinance to say, instead of just going off of sidewalks, you go off of the, uh, the edge of the property line. Um, so that, that sidewalk is never going to be inhibited, even if the sidewalk location's changed, cause the sidewalk location will always be in right of way.
That language is, is, is actually here, is just invisible because you've got an earlier draft.
Okay.
And, and I've been sitting here worried that somebody would ask that because I don't in my memory, I can go pull my computer and, and pull that up, but this is an earlier draft. I did a later draft that has that underlying. That's what David Payne brought up at the Planning Commission meeting and we addressed that in the final, uh, draft.
So we don't have a final draft?
You do not have it right now, cause the one that I did is, is, has underlines in it, but it, but I'll tell you what, if you, if we move to another subject, which perhaps we should, I'll go out and grab my computer and I'll be able to tell you just a few words.
Yeah, truly the difference is instead of going five feet?
I have emailed, I did email.
Instead of going five feet from the sidewalk, you're going five feet from the property line.
And so in that would allow for the sidewalk to be at the curb, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, so, uh, by doing that, the sidewalk will never be, uh, you'll never have to worry about the sidewalk, cause we'll never build a sidewalk on their, their property. We only build it in the right of way.
So, so that covers where they're hitting the sidewalk, if there is a sidewalk that's 15 feet off the curb?
No, it's still, it still covers, it still covers where there is a sidewalk. It covers both. Yeah, so you go to their property line, you go five feet in, they can put a carport, that will not, and that won't inhibit any kind of sidewalk we currently have nor any in the future.
But my property line is on the other side of the sidewalk, is it not?
No, that would be public right of way.
But they still, it's still their property line?
It's public right of way, no. Yeah, it's, their, their property line does not extend into the public right of way.
You still think we need that sidewalk?
Yeah, so, I mean, you go, you go from the, the, people will mow that and they'll say, hey, this is my property, it's not, it's a public right of way. They, they have a responsibility to maintain it, but it's not their property. The city can do whatever we want with that because it's public, which is why we can put sidewalks down, right? We don't have to ask permission, we just do it. It's a public right of way.
So is that five foot the same between the houses on, on the property lines?
I don't understand the question you're asking.
So, so, so I, I have known somebody currently that wants to put a carport on their lot, on their, at their, in front of their garage, but their garage isn't, doesn't meet the setback requirements already. It's, it's like two feet from the property line.
You're talking side of yards rather than?
Side of yards, yes.
Bryce, do you remember what it said on, uh, on side of yards? Did there have to be a setback on it? I can't remember what.
Would you wanna go grab your laptop?
It was.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's not addressed here. I mean, there's normally a five yard, yeah, or a five foot setback, you know? It, it all depends what zoning district you're in. But, you know, it's normally a five foot setback on a side yard. It's, it's different if it's a corner.
Does meet the same side setbacks as the principal unit?
Which is five feet. Well, five feet for residential. So yes, the answer to this. If they have a current structure that's two feet away though, they, they would have to go to a Board of Adjustment to get permission to build two feet because that is contrary to the current code.
That, that would be outside the standard request?
Yeah, the standard request would be five feet.
And, and the, the regulations around the ordinance that were, they would find out all that when they came for their permit?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so they'd say, they call up the city and say, hey, I wanna build a carport. Your neighbor then talk to them and say, hey, here are the rules with carports and walk them through the whole process. with carports and walk them through the whole process.
If you want to move to another item-
We can do that.
I would be happy to.
So we'll come back to item 13. Let's jump down to item 14. Receive recommendation from Perry Planning Commission on rezoning and lot combination for 1504 North 8th Street, Perry, Oklahoma, 73077, by Albert Jethro Taylor and Jennifer Dawn Driscoll Taylor. Consider directing city staff to repair an amendment to the hobby chicken duck ordinance. This is what everybody's here for.
Yeah. So do you want me to give background first or do you want him to come up either way?
Go ahead.
So background of this is the Taylor family asked to have their, their flatland zoned agriculture to allow for additional chickens and ducks. The current ordinance reads that you can have either five chickens, four or five ducks, one or the other. I'll let them kind of talk about what led them to have more. There were some misunderstandings in, in the past. No, not on our end. But ultimately, the planning commission denied that, which then comes to you as a recommendation. So planning commission said no to the ag change. The reason why planning commission said that was the concern is as soon as you make it agricultural, even if the intent of the current property owner is not to do X, Y, and Z, all of a sudden it opens up the opportunity to do X, Y, and Z. And X, Y, and Z can be farm animals. It can be unlimited amounts of chickens and ducks. It can be, I mean, there's just a whole sloth of things, right, that you can do in an agricultural property that you can't in residential. So the planning commission said, no, we don't want to, we don't want to do that. They appreciated the Taylors coming out. But the, the question was then asked by the Taylors and I think it's a good question, something that we may consider as a council. They said, well, you know, a lot of properties in Perry sit on, you know, maybe an average of 2.5 acres or .25 acres, excuse me, which is considerably smaller than what they have. I think their property in question is 3.6. And so their question is if somebody on .25 acres can have five chickens or five ducks, why can't someone on 3.6 have more than that? Which I think is kind of a good question. And that's why the recommendation here is to receive recommendation from the council and directing staff if, if you want us to look further into that, see if other cities do a, perhaps like a per acreage amount. So say five per acre or whatever it is. But that's kind of the background. Denied by the, by the planning commission. But the Taylors still would like that. Staff is like, oh, well, there's some questions raised there.
Okay. Absolutely. Well, Taylors, let's, let's share what you got.
Hello, I'm Jennifer. Albert. We're just requesting that we be able to keep the chickens and the ducks that we have. I'm really into gardening and when we moved in, we started getting lots of ticks on us just in our backyard. So I got a few chickens just for eggs and realized that they were eating all of the pests and ticks. So I ended up extending and getting more. At the time, I thought it, we were ag. We were told when we bought the house that it was agriculture or would have never done that. We lived in Broken Arrow where we always had a homeowners association. So not even one chicken could be in the neighborhood. So I wouldn't have done anything that I did if I would have known. I wasn't trying to go against ordinance. We are kind of tucked in, you know, where we're tucked in. Basically, people don't even know we're there except for maybe a couple of neighbors can see a very small portion of our yard. The neighbors next door, they usually will watch our animals when we're out of town. Didn't, I mean, we've had it for two years. I even had a rooster, which we got rid of him two days after we got denied. Ducks came along as a Mother's Day gift. So then found out that my mom is allergic to chicken eggs. She has a chronic disease and they did a lot of testing on her. And duck, and she hasn't had eggs in years. And finally duck was okay. It was a level one. It goes to five. And so she's been eating omelets and eat cakes and things that have eggs in it now. So that's why I want to keep my ducks. And I wanted to extend our property, our fencing out so that I can put more chickens out because I can't even go out on our back property without coming back with ticks on us. Like him even gone the lawnmower on his zero turn and comes back and he had, I have, have to check for ticks. So it's very expensive spraying that much. We had Martin out there and I was just like, can't do that. Plus spraying poison all over our land wasn't something I wanted to do either. If I could throw some more chickens out there. I looked into guineas and just listening to them, I was like, nope, that's too loud. And that's even when we were ag. So I wouldn't, I didn't want to do that to just not us, but our neighbors also. People might get peacocks. And I'm like, those are one of the loudest, you know, noisy birds in the world. So we've just stuck with chickens. And we constantly ask the neighbors that we are close to, that are around us, that we speak to, and it just like doesn't bother us at all. Reminds me of childhood. And if you ever go to town, we watch them. So it was just recently that we had a complaint. And then Animal Control did come out and said, you know, you're not supposed to have a rooster. I think if you got rid of the rooster and you tried to, you know, get a special permit or ordinance change, she's like, I think you should because if I was a duck or a chicken, I wouldn't have lived here. I use coffee bedding in my chicken coops just because for my garden, I have compost. I give compost to neighbors, people in town. My parents come from Texas and they grab eggs and compost. So we also have six kids. So we're always giving them eggs because food's expensive. So that's why we're just wanting to kind of upend the ordinance a bit on, you know, the variance.
We're not talking about 100 chickens either.
No.
I would-
I, I work from home. I'm always home. So every time I have a break, lunch, before, after work, I'm always out there. It's calming. They're peaceful. I mean, and it's not even as loud at all since I have no rooster. It's very quiet. The only noise that comes out of them is a chicken when she lays her egg and it lasts about a minute. She's got to do her little egg song. And that's about it. I think I, I sent an email to Renee. I don't know if, she said she passed it. I don't know who has my email, but it has pictures of what people see. It's literally a little patch of my yard. Once I open up and I put it more onto our land, it's literally covered in trees. You can't, you won't be able to see anything back there. And that's where we're wanting to put it. And we'd have to remove some trees that are not even native Oklahoma. They're kind of a base of anyway. We're going to pull them, put more fruit trees. We planted, I think, what, four, four fruit, fruit trees right now. So finally getting apple and peaches. But that's what I wanted to be going forward.
Gotcha. Thank you, Jennifer. So maybe who's the staff that's working on this?
So Renee is working on this specifically. They've been in collaboration with Renee on it. She did pass on that email to me and I read it.
Gotcha. So is the staff looking at, are you guys looking at doing like the acreage thing? Or you could have like X amount of ducks or chickens per acre kind of a thing?
Yeah. So that's a, we, we determined that would be this discussion for you guys to decide. Do you want us, is that something you want us to look at? Are you fine with the ordinance as is?
That they wouldn't have to change to ag. They could, if we changed it to per acre, then that could allow for more.
Yep. And that would obviously be a, a general solution rather than a specific solution in this case.
And that would be per lot?
Well, it could be, it could be however you wanted it structured. But if you would like, we can look into it, come back with a recommendation. Our initial thought was to do X number of chickens or ducks per acre with a minimum or a maximum, you know? So if they have 60 acres, you're still maxed out at some.
And have it consistent with the OSU, right? You know, they've got the, they've, they've got the agricultural department over there. We'll just take a look and see what those are so that the requirements that, that we, that we would set or at least recommend to you would be ones that are recommended from their department.
But this is a legislative change. We didn't want to put staff to work on this if it's something that the council is not interested in us looking at. So-
You know, the history is people came, asked for chickens, became the chickens. They then came and asked for ducks. We amended that ordinance to include ducks. We don't want roosters, you know? I mean, that's, that's something that you can't have. And I know that there's, there's people here and I don't know what that number would be, but certainly you don't want it to be a number that would, that would create a nuisance, create a, you know, a manure problem or something else for the neighbors. But yeah, the request is just, do you want us to, to bring something forward?
Gotcha. Gotcha.
So I was unfamiliar with your address. So I pulled it up on my map.
Yes, I did.
So are your ducks taking advantage of that pond?
They are. Oh, no, not, not the shared pond. We, you built the pond, like a little.
And your request would be to have more than the ten head that you currently have?
No, they can only have five, right?
But you have five chickens and five ducks.
No, we have more chickens than that.
Yeah. You can have, the current ordinance, you can have a total of five, a mix.
I misunderstood. I thought you guys had five of each.
We have more just because we thought we were ag and I was trying. We just had our land surveyed so that we would know kind of how to put the fencing. But we also have a floodway that we have to keep open for pond. Like on 7th Street, all that water, that went through our land and they went-
The front yard?
Yeah. That was our front yard. So we were trying to figure out where it's surveyed and then they were, the code enforcement office was trying to show us where we could build a fence and where we can't. Plus we don't want it to be ugly in front of the house. We didn't want fencing out there. But we wanted to kind of push them out there because the whole point was, I mean, there's snakes back there. There's, and my chickens, he snakes, at least the ones they can get on. But it was a lot of the tick issue that I was having. Probably had a thousand grasshoppers once upon a time too and now I see one, a few more. So they've been just helpful.
It'd be good to learn more about it, to see what other communities are doing. And I don't know if there are anything property of butts of agriculture. Yeah, our neighbors have horses.
Can I think to you-
That's right by the horse.
Yeah.
I think to you, maybe where you were going, I don't know for sure, but if they're considering it, it might be two separate lots. Is that right? So if you may have so many acres, but whatever you come up with, it have to account for adjoining lots or something like that?
Because the lot the house is on is a certain acreage and then they own the, the adjoining lot, which is probably where you keep the chickens and the- That's where I was wanting to put them. Right now, they're like right in our backyard. But I was wanting to kind of push them out where the problem is.
Yeah. The application that they made, as you know, is, was a lot combination. A lot combination is by right in an RG district. In an R1 district, it's subject to a process where you mail out notices and publication alike. It, it had the additional feature of rezoning, a plan commission. And I, I wasn't at the planning commission meeting. Did, did they recommend denial of the, of the lot combination too?
They, I, I think they tackled that as well. Or they did just a denial generally, if I remember right.
I think that's kind of all of it.
Because, you know, that, that issue would be resolved with a lot combination. I mean, I can't think of any harm that is caused by the lot combination. Of course, the rezoning, there is, you know? I mean, it's agriculture in an area which is traditionally residential. There's a bunch of residences that have been protests that have been lodged and the like. So, but, you know, that's me. I think that the lot combination piece makes sense. But and then if it was and you wanted us to disordinance, it would be anywhere on the, you know, anywhere on the lot. But that would still be subject to, you know, whatever we would bring and that you'd want it consistent with the OSU standards and the like. That, that second piece is for another day.
So a couple, I've heard two council members say it wouldn't hurt to get more information. Is that kind of the general consensus that you want us, is something you want us to look into further?
I guess there's-
I agree.
One thing to throw out is just to make that the lot that doesn't have the house on it agriculture and not both lots.
Yeah. You guys can certainly do that. That's why this is kind of before you, you know, it's, this is, this is your call. The planning commission made a recommendation that you don't have to follow, which is to, to leave things as, as residential.
Or we can change the hobby duck, chicken.
Yep. Yep. Or you can do nothing. I mean, you have, you have a lot of options.
I'd like to learn more about what other cities are doing, about the one here that you can have per acreage. You've been talking to OSU, like you said, and getting an idea of what that could be. Because I mean, makes sense if you have more property that you could-
Well, shows Oklahoma City does six chickens per acre.
Oklahoma City does?
Yeah. See, that's a great example of a per acre.
To me, that makes more sense than rezoning.
Right. Five number. Okay. That's great. We'll look into it. We'll bring back a, a recommendation at a future council meeting. Appreciate the guidance.
Currently, we allow five per lot.
Resident.
For residents or what? Because they have a lot and then they have a lot that has a house on it. So could they put five on the lot to have the house on it and five on the lot that doesn't have a house on it?
I'd have to look. I believe the ordinance though says there can't be just a standalone structure on a lot with nothing else on it. Therefore, they wouldn't be able to have a chicken coop or any kind of a structure just standing alone on that.
No shock.
If it's not permanent.
He likes working on old cars.
What?
If it's not permanent, I think you can.
Yeah, maybe. Then we'd have to define permanent.
Right. Like the skid buildings? I don't know that for sure. Is that looking at others that might know about his name?
I, I know that we ran into an issue on one. But he had his house on a lot and they wanted a portable building on one and still had to do the lot combination to be able to get that done.
Well, and I think kind of turned into a messy feeling. The number of chickens and ducks you can have isn't for the homeowner. It's for their neighbors. And if we start bending the rules so that we can have a chicken farm in the middle of one of the better neighborhoods in Perry, I'm, I'm not sure that that's something we want to consider.
Personally, I don't like the idea of making one of those lots agricultural. I, I think they should stay residential in the middle of a residential area.
There is an ag right there.
Okay. It's across the fence. So would every city that's got ag letting up to want to change everything inside that fence?
Right, right.
We'd like to see the lot combination. Doesn't probably make more sense. And that would allow you to put your shop on there if you wanted it. That would be my recommendation. But I would like to find out more what the city, other cities are doing. I like the Oklahoma City one. That one would probably fit into what you guys are wanting to do.
Right.
Yeah. I only understand I was disappointed not getting ag just so I wouldn't have to stress on the chickens I have. But there was an caller that came last time and he was like, I don't care if she has 100 chickens. I, I don't care. I, it's, it's if they ever move. Like we plan on retiring here. But if we were to move, then that new people would have ag. That's why he said he didn't want it. He's like, I don't want goats and I don't want donkeys. So I was like, okay, I respect that. Like I would-
Which is my reason why I don't want, I wouldn't want to see that changed.
No, I think that's why when we bought the house, they kind of told us it was ag because of the horses. I don't know.
Right. Not more than five hobby chickens or hobby ducks maybe kept per residential tract containing one dwelling unit.
So what if it's a residential tract that doesn't have a dwelling unit?
Then you can't.
Then you can't have-
Then you can't have it.
You can't have it.
Yeah. And that's maybe one reason why if you combine and then you did an amendment, you know, or at least looked at an amendment.
Yeah, at this point, I'd recommend probably zooming out as a council and just say, you know, we, we appreciate that Taylor's coming. Now we need to consider this more broadly.
Right.
I agree.
Just the idea of, I mean, doing the per acre. I mean, right now, whether if you have a tenth of an acre, you have five acres, you can have the same amount of chickens. It's like one of the tiny homes that are here. They can have just as many chickens as somebody that has five acres.
Right.
Right.
It, it should be, there should be a scale. It should be weighted.
Well, I have a big family, so it's fine.
And, and there, there is a minimum amount of space you have to have in order to have chickens in there.
Not from what the media spread, right?
I think there's a minimum amount of, there's a minimum amount of, amount of space in order to have a residence and in order to have chickens, you have to have a residence. So the answer is yes, around about that.
How many chickens do you have?
Thirty. Maybe twenty-five. No, I got rid of some. Then I have four of them that will be gone on Friday.
Is that about your ideal amount?
Well, I just made a cake a few days ago and it took thirteen eggs. We do a lot of baking and a lot of kids take eggs.
So you guys have three acres?
Three, three point six.
But that's just that one lot, don't you have more?
The one lot is like.
No.
One lot's two.
One of that's one point seven seven and the other one's two point oh two.
Gosh, so if we went off like Oklahoma City's, you could have.
Six per acre, so eighteen.
Eighteen, you could have eighteen chickens.
Couple of combinations of chickens and ducks.
Yeah, the idea was to keep the ducks in the backyard so we could take better care with their water source. If they have a pond, it can get crows, plus they have to have water, lots of water. And so they were going to stay in the backyard and we were going to have the coop and everything fenced in on the back lot to kind of, the tick population's ridiculous. I mean, his mom just got sick from ticks. She, it's from New York, but that kind of worried me. She had a line disease that she has now. And so whenever our, at the time, our little boy was three, he was coming in, we had to keep pulling ticks off of him, just playing in the backyard. I was like, oh my gosh, can't even play here. So, I don't know, we just started seeing less and less. And then no spiders, we don't see spiders or anything in our backyard. So I wanted to kind of push them out there, hopefully cut it all down because it's really bad back there.
I think it'd be good to keep exploring this and have staff.
Anybody wants to come by?
Want to get some eggs?
Bring some, yeah, you have some eggs. And it brings haul boots because there's ticks everywhere.
So do we table this or?
Right, yeah. And then, Mr. Taylor, good, thank you for that. There were some others that did want to speak on this. So anybody else have anything else to say?
I'm Dakota Johnson. I live to the, me and my wife both live to the west. We have two lots there that back up to their property. I think, you know, like you guys said, with the planning commission, you know, they kind of talked about, you know, turning down the agriculture lot, which I think is probably the most important. But then, you know, it just got me thinking when you're talking about the number of chickens per acre. I mean, like, how does that affect on how big of fenced in area do you have? Like, are you, if you only fenced in an acre, but well, heck, you have four acres, well, then you can have all that, you know? And they've talked about how they're in a flood zone, you know, so they can't really take advantage of all four of their acres because of that. So I just think that's something needs to be taken into account. You know, all the, you know, a couple of their neighbors here and a few neighbors couldn't make it, you know, they're all against it. So that's kind of our opinion. So hopefully we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Did you have anything or?
I don't really have a whole lot to add. And I live right next to Dakota in that same area and I'm kind of in the same budget. I just, when I got the letter, what, what they were trying to do, and I, I can't hear everything here. I'm not real good here, but I just, that amount of livestock around or whatever that turns into, I just didn't want to see a lot of livestock in the area. We're right next to a creek. We have some wildlife now and I have some concerns too about wildlife, what that might attract into the area. A lot of pets in the neighborhood and that kind of thing. And just really didn't like the idea of a whole lot of livestock in the area. So that's kind of where I'm at.
What about your thoughts on doing like the number, increasing the number of chickens per acre with that?
Well, again, I don't know. How far is that going to spread? That's where I'm, I'm right there close and I don't care about a lot of livestock being close. But myself, but like I said, I don't know. Again, I didn't hear all the numbers and everything. Are we only talking about chickens now?
Chickens and ducks.
Ducks. And the pond, how does the pond come into that? Everybody, there's several people that own that pond and I don't, are the ducks going to have access to the pond?
No, the chickens and ducks have to stay.
No, they're domesticated. They're domesticated ducks. They have to stay to our house. Like, we have a pond in our backyard.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking because the main pond is that we're all associated with. So again, that's just, that's kind of where I'm at.
That is a good point. It was a chicken saying, that can hurt kids and, you know, things like that.
Okay. Well, with this, we won't take any action, but I mean, I think you have what you need to kind of look into it more. And this could be something that we can discuss later on, once you have more examples.
Yeah, we'll absolutely bring it back. Thanks, council, for.
Well, I think with respect to this, there's, there's really two issues. One, do you want to approve the lot combination? So that would be an approval or denial on that vote. And do you want to approve the rezoning? And that would be an approval or denial on that. And then I suppose we could bring something back, but I mean, the, the planning commission has made its recommendation and unless you wanted to continue this action to another time and not take it today, it would be appropriate to, to.
So the planning commission denied both combining the lots and rezoning.
Yes. And I think that was kind of inadvertent. They just kind of looked at the chicken side and kind of forgot the lot combo.
They just kind of denied everything.
Right.
Yeah, there wasn't any issue with the lot combo.
Was there any opposition to that?
I didn't hear any of it because I was hearing anything about the lot combination.
We'll start with the lot combination. Does anyone have any thoughts or issues with that?
I honestly just don't have, don't really know what that is, what that tells. So I would like more information before I just voted on something.
Gotcha. Well, let's go ahead and put this, both of those off until next time.
Okay. So continue these to the next meeting together with something.
Right.
Okay.
Perfect. All right. So with that, we will now move on to item number 22.
Lawrence, I've got one question.
Oh, yes.
Nate, were you going to have someone do a little research for us on some other, what other cities are doing as far as acreage and head? So we could at least look at some of what we can change there.
Yes, correct, yeah. We'll come back with a recommendation based on what other cities are doing and what OSU says.
All right, any other questions? All right. Item number 22, authorize mayor to execute the warranty deed to Richard Crow as provided pursuant to the economic development agreement. So with this, you believe the Crow Arena has their.
Certificate of occupancy.
Yep.
Have their CO. Yeah, super exciting. We've worked for over a year with the Crows on this project and they met every, every box that the city had, checked every box and went through all of our processes. We have issued a certificate of occupancy. But because of the scrutiny this project has received, we, in talking to the Crows, decided to actually approach the state fire marshals and just say, hey, this project has met every, everything in our books. This is why we did what we did. What are your, your thoughts? Because they're the ultimate jurisdiction. And they said, hey, Paul Gunderson's exemption for not sprinkling the arena applies to the vast majority of the arena, but there are portions of the arena that are considered adjacent. So that would be the spectator area, the concession booth, and some closets, and those need to be sprinkled, which ends up being, I think, it was like twenty-eight hundred square feet and it's a hundred thousand square foot arena. And so just a really good meeting with the state fire marshals. They said they can continue to, to operate and have a fire watch and give them a year to get that, that sprinkler system put in place. So we executed a contract with the Crows to implement all of those things. They're currently open and operating and running a fire watch. But now things go back to our previous arrangement with them, which is the economic development agreement made last year to deed them the property when they had gotten the certificate of occupancy. They have done that. And so it's a recommendation of staff that we now pass that property on to them to operate as their own and to continue to, to meet some of those economic development initiatives, which are bringing events and things like that. And to that, to that subject, I brought Alex Crow. He came and is going to speak to some of his events and things they have over the next year.
Hello. Hello, Alex Crow. And as Nate was saying, we met with the state fire marshal's office and I'm currently in the process of getting bids and quotes on a sprinkler system over the approximately twenty-eight hundred square foot area and the concessions mainly. And we're looking at having our first small event to get all the Kinks working out of software and gates and that type of thing. Next weekend, it'll be a smaller event. You guys are all invited. And then hopefully second week of next month, having our grand, hurrah, grand opening. It's kind of over anticipated. Tonight, we were kind of seeking to get ownership transferred for the lot so I get under my insurance umbrella. So when we have our grand opening, it will be protected under us personally and we won't have to have the city involved. It's not going to happen, which I'm sure is minimal. Do you guys have any questions from me?
Is there somebody there pretty much during the day or all the time to where if we wanted to just come take a tour?
Yeah, I'm actually there usually from seven to about now. And we're currently having a practice run right now. So a few members have already stopped by and said hello. So you're welcome. Okay.
Can you tell me a little bit about some of the other events that you guys have planned and just the interest that you guys have seen in this world?
So we've been using social media. One of our first videos received almost eight thousand likes and watches within the first, I think it was seven days. Some of our other videos are averaging three to four thousand views within approximately a week. And those are on YouTube and Facebook. So lots of market share and lots of people interested. All the ropers that have roped in it to date have said it's the nicest indoor roping arena in Oklahoma. So that's all good news.
So what do you call it, the place?
It's Crown Line Arena, based off of our flat bed line, Crown Line by GZ.
So what type of events are, is it mainly going to be roping or?
It is all equestrian tight events. So you have team roping, sorting, barrel racing. You can do dressage, events such as that. There are a few others, but those are the big four or five.
Plans all different ages too, right?
Yep, we're going to have some play days. One of the, the next big, or stage two that we spoke of when we started this project a year ago is RV hookups. So we're going to have to find a location and power for up to three to four hundred RV hookups. We'd like to keep it obviously within the city limits if possible. Nate has expressed there's some, some disagreement with that, but if it's an option, we'd like to do that. Because for us to get to the next stage and get one of the largest organization events in Oklahoma, we have to have stalls and we have to have power. So even if it's just on the other side of the city limits, it has to be reasonably close to the facility.
How many acres do you look at per something?
To start out, fifteen. We anticipate twenty to thirty though is what we'd have to have to fully staff and build that to meet the, the space requirements.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And I think Nate had a video if he wanted to share it. If he doesn't, like I said, it's on Facebook, so.
Yeah, I don't have it pulled up. I forgot about it.
If you look at Crown Line Arena on Facebook.
Yep, yeah, pull right up.
And that'll give them the opportunity to follow you while they're on there.
That's right. Follow us and then you can see where our bits are going to be because that's going to be where we post it. We've had great audience engagement, so.
And just to Scott's point, if you haven't been out there and seen that arena, it's, it's really fantastic. It looks big from the outside, but when you're standing inside, you realize it's ginormous. It's huge and all.
So what's the capacity for seating?
So our, our seating is still on order.
Okay.
We anticipate to have it within about a month and a half. But once we're sprinkler, I think capacity can go up to thousand to fifteen hundred persons. Currently, we're at three hundred and like sixty-one.
Okay.
So with, with the sprinkler system, we're going to almost group our capacity.
We have a website also?
Yep, you have www.crownlinearena.com. And you can input your information on there. And we have our first event. It's going to send a mass email to get on, on the waitlist, I guess.
I've already said this, Alex, but huge congratulations, congratulations to you guys. It's a huge project and we've been grateful, I think, to be partners. And just really excited for you guys and what it's going to do for the city.
Yeah, we, we're super excited. We got our, our sales tax certificate and our concession stand health permit on both last week. So we are right there at the finish line. So we're excited to partner with the, the city and bring some business, bring some tax dollars to spend on fuel and food and that type of thing.
All right, any questions for Alex?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you, Alex.
Mayor, I do have that, that document Bryce was talking about, hold up, the newest ordinance, if you'd like to go back to it.
What, don't we need to?
Oh, we need to approve this. Oh, I'm sorry. Not just yet, yeah.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
You have copy?
Yes.
Blesov?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldark?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Wore them?
Yes. All right. Here you go, Alex. Thanks, guys. We'll get that signed and over to you. All right. So which item are you want to go back to?
It was thirteen.
Thirteen, okay. You have that.
So the only language change compared to the ordinance that you have in your packet is in section twelve dash two, three, three. So the front yard and rear yard carports, section A, sub point two. It says, so it reads, be set back at least five feet from the near edge of the adjacent sidewalk, if any, and at least ten feet from the curb, which is what council member Coldark was talking about, or the edge of the roadway if no curb is present. And then we added this language, provided in any event, the setback shall, shall be at least five feet from the front right of way. So that's the only change is that, provided in any event, the setback shall be at least five feet.
The, the, there's one other change, it's just a deletion. And that is the carport may exceed the height limit set forth in the section, but check and follow all applicable height limitations. I honestly don't remember why that was placed in the ordinance, but Dave Payne wanted it gone, as did the planning commission. And so that's deleted. So you can't put in a.
Twenty-five foot.
You can't, yeah, thirty foot. That doesn't work. But, but these changes, you know, they were prepared to do this. Dave is now assisting the planning commission. He had these issues. And so we met with him and, and, and got them worked out with him. But, you know, if you want to send it back to planning, you can certainly do. I just think this is.
So you took.
Well, you've already heard, I'm a big proponent of this.
So you took out A, B, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And C, C becomes B and D becomes C. Yeah.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five twelve with the changes mentioned.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
And thirteen C, consider approval of the emergency clause for ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash twelve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Yep, I'm sure. Marshall seconded, that's all I got. Okay, copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
All right. Now we're back to our regular meeting here with item number six, our city manager report.
I already feel like I've spoken along, so.
Anything else to add?
I wanted to first publicly thank the street and electric crews who worked really hard on six eighteen during that storm there up all night. And were able to restore power quickly, so wanted to recognize that. Secondly, I wanted to just give some updates from the last meeting that council asked a few questions. So called Jim Smith and spoke to him about a grass issue. Checked storm damage from the culverts and got some definitive answers there on that Seventh Street culvert. The lights on fur drove that, there are two lights out. I've notified our electric superintendent and he is getting his crews to work on those. And then the last thing asked about was the pecan drive sewer line, which is done. The only thing that remains to be done is smoothing out the dirt, which is a mess from all the work they did, but we have to wait till it dries out. So that kind of gives an update. And then the only thing, the only other thing I wanted to mention is I've had a couple of council members ask to have the agendas earlier. And just wanted to let you know that is in the works. Next, next meeting, we plan to send out a draft agenda, actually, on Monday so that you have a full view to see the draft and we'll update it as things move on. That's all I have.
Yeah, with that, kind of talking about the agenda, I know what I had asked Nate was that if we can get, since Meredith and Bryce are here on Mondays, if they can kind of put together a rough draft, at least for the council to start getting eyes on things that are going to be there. You know, if we can squeeze things into the consent agenda and then get that out to us as a council, then that gives us the entire week to ask questions about things that are on a consent agenda, invoices, things like that, that we can pull out of the main portion of our meeting and start using that main part of our meeting to discuss strategic planning, direction, visionary type things, as opposed to getting in the weeds with invoices and details like that. And then if the, if a more updated agenda can get put out by Wednesday, end of day, and then I would say anything between Wednesday and Friday can get tossed into new business. And then on, when we have our meeting on Monday, then when we get to that new business, we as a council can decide, hey, let's talk about that new business and make a decision. Or we can give them the direction, hey, look into this more for next meeting. That way we have time to look at it and we're not having to make decisions sort of on the spot.
That would be ideal.
Yeah. I think that would go over well. So Nate, thanks for taking that on and working on that.
Absolutely.
But any questions for Nate?
No, but I do want to make sure and thank, that the sewer crew gets thanked for that huge project on, was it the con?
Con. It was a big one and it was tight. They had not very much space to work. I'll pass it on to them.
And, yeah, it was a major undertaking and with the storms and everything else. I know it slowed it down, but I know the neighbors that live around there are greatly appreciative of the fact that it's done.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll pass that on, I appreciate it.
How did the, how did the auction go?
Oh, it went really well. The haul was, this is, we haven't, we haven't received the numbers with pickings cut yet. But it's, I think their advertising fee, I think we negotiated it down to twelve hundred bucks or something. And the total amount of revenue was twenty-one thousand. So a pretty good haul on that. And that does not include the brass valves, which will be by far the biggest item. We anticipate about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of brass valves. Lots of stuff sitting around for lots of years that we got rid of.
That's good. You can read up space and mail.
Yeah.
Yeah, great question. Any other questions?
I do, I did find something today. I don't remember the exact, I had too much going on. I did have a note here to ask if the council could receive like any, an email of any communications that go to the public. Because sometimes that, I don't always see what's getting published in the paper or anything like that. So I don't remember exactly what it was, but there was something that I noticed that I didn't even know was being published into, oh, it was, I did too, it was the the budget, the budget deal or, and the, and the chicken thing, I think. Maybe it was just the budget. But anyway, just any communication that the public gets, could the council get an email? Just highlighting that to us so that we have some idea of what's being put out there.
So we can get some calls to know what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's important.
Are you talking like things that get published in the paper and they're backed?
Like a public notice kind of thing. Zone change, Main Street thing. But I'm just trying to think of like things like recently that.
Like the letter they got for the chickens?
Yeah.
The neighbors?
Yeah, the neighbors got out. I guess that way, so if neighbors start calling us, we're going to like, what are you doing? That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, we can absolutely do it.
Thank you. All right. We're ready to jump over to item number seven? Let's do it. Our CFO remarks monthly invoice.
All right. I guess it was like a lifetime ago, but so invoice for this month was the, for the month of June, was the wrap up of the audit. Got submitted to the state, it's been accepted by the state, got our federal clearinghouse done. And so that is marked off the list just in time to start the twenty-twenty-five audit, which I just prepared the schedule for. We're going to try to get Jana up here by October and hopefully issue it that October meeting. So she and I are working out schedules right now to make sure that we can get bill work planned and everything done. And so, anyway, on your list, that's coming up. And other things that were going on this month are, just our regular monthly work. We did some sales tax analysis on earnings over the past five years. And talked about the equipment financing that's on the agenda. The FOP contract and calculating different ways that the wages and things are going to work on that. And we approved the budget, which I know seems like a lifetime ago, but that was also part of our work. And then some, worked with Autumn and Christie and Heather in the office about credit card balancing, making sure that we're capturing all of those credit cards and getting applied to the right place and making sure that they're showing up in our financials properly. So a lot of detailed work and nothing to, so.
Thank you, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith? All right. Item number eight, presentation of city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of work this month on economic development projects. Seth Wadley and the road, I met with Jared and I think that Nate has spoken to Jared and we're trying to make a full court press to get that, get that road moving, get an agreement here to you so that, so that we can get that commitment finalized.
And that's to make the road anyway?
Yes, yes. Project Duke, may have discussed this before, but once we get to the point that it looks like that's going to close, it does look like we're going to get, or could get a substantial grant funding for that with additional benefits to Ditwich, Toro, and a lot of other businesses. ACIF in the Travel Plaza worked with ODOT. Derek helped me there. And we reached, actually reached right on up to the director of ODOT, who got the engineering plans kicked out and approved in a manner in which it pleased ACIF. It had to do with being able to use a shoulder for a lane, which were cut down considerably on cost. And also speaking a bit to financiers on that project should have hopefully good news soon. In the Crown Line Arena, you know, so many naysayers about something that was just so wonderful for this community. A former, you know, building official creating a YouTube channel and railing against the city and railing against, against the Crows and even some internally and everybody expressing an opinion on what the, on what should happen out there. Finally, Nate and I decided to grab the, is it the cow by the horns?
The bull.
The bull by the horns. I think I'm not. The bull by the horns. And get down to the guy that can, you know, make the decision to set up that meeting and went down there and I think you heard from him what had occurred. What's great about that is not just that, you know, only three percent of the arena, you know, has to be sprinkled, so there's not a giant cost there. But that any question that's been out there, you know, is settled. Was settled right at the highest state office on that issue.
And I do have to say that would, that project would not have come to fruition without Bryce. It just wouldn't.
Anyway, that was a good, a good project. And so we put that contract together and help from Ben, a trainer. We've got a good fire watch burger. And just to understand, you know, it has to be an equestrian center because that's the exemption. And you may ask, why can't we do a, you know, a trunk show, you know, kind of TV trunk show or something out there? You know, if it all got sprinkled, you know, then, then you could do something other. But the exemption in the code is for equestrian events. So that's what, that's the limitation. I just wanted to point that out in case you were asked, because that is the issue. The other thing I went ahead and talked to the state fire marshal about was the plight of downtowns in Oklahoma. And how, you know, in, in markets which aren't as rich as Oklahoma City, maybe Norman, you know, maybe, oh, definitely Tulsa. But in some of the other cities, the amount of money that you need to spend to meet fire marshal standards with upstairs sprinklers can, can make the project unaffordable. I know that the scribners, the artists, the scribners over in Enid paid well over a hundred thousand dollars ten years ago to do their sprinklers on the, on the upstairs. And it looked like New York City coming into the size of the building, more than a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, how do you get that, how do you get that return? So, and maybe everybody knows about it, but there's a product, there's a product PEX pipe can be installed by a plumber, okay? Doesn't require a fire alarm company. And, and it's been used in another, in a number of situations, not necessarily in downtown. And so I'm working with the state fire marshal to try to get that. And they don't think it'll be difficult to get that as something that would be allowed. I think that would really, because PEX pipe can be just installed by your plumber up above. So the cost of that would be substantially less. They thought it was a good idea. I thought it was a good idea. I'm working with them on that.
Using PEX for the fire sprinkler system?
Yes. And it can be installed by plumbers instead of by a fire alarm company.
Yeah, I know.
Does that sound bad or something?
No, it's a lot cheaper.
Yes.
Yeah, no, a lot cheaper and that's why. Yeah, and then they felt to a man there that, that that would be something that could be done. Okay? I would say the, lots of administration, this was June, so, you know, everything comes due in June. And so there was just a whole lot of work. With, with Brian Henry leaving and Renee being promoted, you know, into, into that work and that position and David Payne being back, we had a number of meetings and really, I think, coordinated, Nate was in a few of those, really coordinated well as a group tackling issues on the front end. So by, so by the time they get to you, they're, they're fully cooked. And it's just a whole new plan on how we're going to do that. I think the rest of my report really speaks to what I did and really nothing worthwhile to talk about. But, you know, everything's really looking good for Perry. It was a good year and we're coming into a, what I see is a great year. Lots of good things on the horizon.
Any questions?
So the travel study was done already?
I'm sorry.
The travel study for the?
That's done and it's done and back to the engineer. And now they're finalizing plans, finalizing plans, having to meet contracts and getting their financing in place.
Is there anything more that we have to do? We're just waiting on?
Not at this point.
We will have to approve plans when they come out.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing, nothing yet.
And site plan.
That'll be the exciting part.
Yeah, I'm like, okay, wait, do we have any timeframe on that yet or are we still hurry and wait?
No, but I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be in the next number of months because there's, there's clocks running on all of it.
Thank you, Bryce. And we'll go to item number ten. So we do need to conduct a public hearing again on the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget and other budgets of the Perry governmental component entities, including the Perry Municipal Authority and Perry Facilities Authority. Receive input from the public, discuss revenues, transfers, expenditures, and all related financial issues. Just because we did approve these in our prior meeting, but it was not posted in the Perry Daily Journal five days prior to that meeting. So we just have to do it again. So I don't believe there's anybody here to talk about the budget. So that will conclude our public hearing. Item number eleven, consider approval of resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash ten of the city council of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, adopting and approving its fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six general fund and other budgets and appropriating revenues for the stated purposes as contained in the budgets directing the mayor. City manager and city clerk take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation of this budget.
Is the exact same thing as last time?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Worthy?
Item number twelve, approve inter-fund borrowing agreement with the Perry Municipal Authority in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars to purchase the P-two-eighty-five Wyler paper equipment authorized purchase from Warren Cat. And where last time we had asked you guys to talk to both of the banks and look at the financing and give us some options with that.
Yes, we did that, talked to both banks, got quotes from both banks. And after receiving the quotes, it occurred to us that we could save about five thousand dollars in interest during the year if we just self-financed it. And so that's the, that's the final recommendation on this.
So how's that work?
You're talking through that. Yeah, so we have existing cash that's part of the Perry Electrical Improvement Fund that was set up, sets.
You're talking through that.
Yeah, so we have existing cash. It's part of the Perry Electrical Improvement Fund that was set up, set up, what, years ago?
30 years ago.
Thank you. 30 years ago. And so what?
Does anyone want to know how I said it?
No.
It was free money. It's a good store.
That's okay.
You can tell us later.
Keep talking, Meredith.
Keep going.
We have that cash, we have the cash available. You all see it on your monthly cash schedule. It would simply be using those funds to purchase the equipment and then the general fund would pay that fund back.
Monthly?
I'm sorry.
Monthly or pay it?
Yes, yes.
No, it's, it's in lump sum pants.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was monthly. So at the beginning of the, or not the end of the fiscal year for the next two years?
So we're just borrowing from ourselves. We're just taking it out of our existing cash and using it. And the difference is one is under the authority's name, the other purchase will be made under the general fund, the city's name. So.
And so does that, was that money set aside for emergencies or something? Are we using money that we could need later?
It was set, it's set aside for electric capital.
Good job, Randy.
No, I mean, that's what it's for. It's for, it's for electric capital needs. But we have, but we have used it, you know, like Congress uses social, social security for borrow.
Don't do that.
That's just the truth. That's what we've done.
So the answer to that question is yes, but we could always borrow the money later if we need it.
Okay. But we pay it back, right? And always do.
That's concise, everything.
Nate, why, if we would have made, moved forward last, two weeks ago with the loan before we talked about both banks, then would we just, that had just been an error and we would have overpaid $5,000 or so in interest?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if error would be the way I'd describe it, but it would have been a less good option, I think is probably the way I would say. Now, of course, it, it depends on how you want to look at it, right? Because taking this, as Randy indicated, is money that we could need, you know, given an emergency. So it's just kind of competing priorities. I think the CFO's recommendation is sound, in my opinion, because we can always borrow that money later should we need it. And I think the chances of us needing it are very low.
Do we sort of treat that like a rainy day fund?
Yeah. Yeah, so the borrower, borrower is slave to the lender and we wanted to be a slave to ourselves in this situation.
Yes, that's how we treat it.
Rainy day fund, yeah.
Kind of, if that's the case, why haven't we borrowed $218,000 to start working on the streets in the past? I mean.
We have money set aside in the street fund.
Well, we do now, but we didn't. So I'm saying, why didn't we do that before? You know what I mean?
Well, I think there's always been kind of that priority of projects that we go through with the budget. And so this came down to actually looking at a third party source, something that would have cost us money from interest perspective.
Oh, I understand that. I just think, why wouldn't we borrow it from ourselves before to start working on pressing items like a street? Because that is one of the major concerns. That's all. It's like, this fund has been there for 30 years.
For a while.
Why haven't we used it?
We have.
Okay. We have used it.
We have utilized it. And there was a fire truck, there was an ambulance, Bryce, those are the two that, I mean, I haven't been around for 30 years, so.
Before you were born.
Right.
Do you want to know how we got it?
I guess it was one of the reasons.
There was less trees downtown, right?
I think part of the answer to that question was the amount though, right, of those projects, like to do streets requires, around streets has required a significant amount of that pool, right? And so we have to be able to pay that back quickly. We haven't been able to, we didn't have the capacity to do that until tree swatterings. So we haven't even, that hasn't even been an option until January.
So with that fund or that account, are there restrictions for that or?
No.
No?
Well, there, it was passed by resolution. Okay, I've got to tell you.
No.
We had OGN.
That was on me now.
We bought power from OGN. The price was high. We negotiated with OMPA. They told us they'd sue us and all that. We negotiated with OMPA. We switched folks. The wholesale price was so much less. We kept the rates the same. We never raised rates for 10 years, okay? But we took the difference between that wholesale rate and this wholesale rate and we completely rebuilt the electric system. Plus, at the end, we had $1 million left to put into what we call an electric capital fund and use for electric capital projects. But it's just a resolution. You can change it at any time, but no council has ever changed it, you know? I mean, they just kept it there. Yeah, that's for electric, but we're going to do borrowing for important things for that, just as long as we get it paid back.
So how much is in there?
Is it set in an account or is it in like a CD or?
It's in our cash schedule. It's on our cash schedule. It's in there.
It was literally done 30 years ago. Right.
I think for me, bringing that up is, it felt like it was rushed last time. It felt like it was a timing issue that we needed to move faster and then we, then we slowed down. But if we wouldn't have been able to slow down, then we may have, there may have been better options. But I think with what you guys said earlier about getting agendas earlier and being able to look at things, might make a difference on that and I appreciate it.
I think to that point, another thing that I think I brought up last time, but don't mean to harp on it, was approached of a very lightly used paving machine for well under half of this that we could have an option for. I'm still afraid that this number's high, but that's me.
Yeah, I think to, to shade, to your point, I agree, right? Time's always, time's always a fantastic resource to have. We are balancing the idea of getting streets pumped out quickly and there's a large lead time for all of this equipment. And so it's, yeah, I agree. Getting the agendas done earlier will, will be helpful.
And understanding there's some things that are going to come up that you just, they're not going to be able to be in the fair time.
Thank you. $715,382 is what's in there.
Is what's in there?
Yes.
So when we pull out the 218, that balance lowers until we pay it back.
Correct. But it's literally moving money between ourselves.
I would move that we approve the interfund marketing agreement.
Second.
Okay. Any other question or discussion? Let's have a roll call.
Copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Calder.
No.
Ruck.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea? No.
Worthy.
Yes.
Item 15. Items pertaining to YMCA applications. A, conduct a public hearing on the closing to the public use of a certain alley running north and south between property owned by the Noble County YMCA, which is a part of block 42, townsite of Perry to the city of Perry, Noble County, state of Oklahoma, accordance to the recorded plat thereof being a portion of the platted alleyway within said block 42. Receive recommendation from the Perry Planning Commission, discuss revocable permit process. So now this is in conjunction with YMCA's, they're going to be doing their renovations and building on an additional space, youth development center to their current YMCA. And they're going to be, that alleyway's not going to be there anymore. That is going to be a building.
Yep, yeah, that's correct. And Planning Commission had no issues with it. Their recommendation was to move forward.
And the alleys where from the existing building?
That alley right behind it.
To the west.
Yeah, right there.
Towards that.
And I'm with the engineer. I'm with the engineer. So if you have any questions on, on that, just let me know.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, so she's going to be closing it down so they can do their construction and their work and.
So it'll just be added on to the back of the current building?
Yes.
Yeah.
And will the building be covering up any existing city utilities?
And we've coordinated with water sewer, all of the communications providers in the alley and everyone is okay with everything. So I think we're going to cap the water and sewer lines is, is what we've been told just coordinating with staff. And we've, of course, been coordinating with the railroad as well, as they're going to be losing that water and sewer to that building to the south. So we, we'll be rerouting that from 8th Street all the way to that, that building.
One on the south side of the railroad tracks?
That's correct. It's a real small metal building. It doesn't use very much water and sewer, but it does.
Right. Exactly. So the city will be rerouting that sewer?
We will be. And dedicating that, of course, to the city. And same thing with our electric. We have a quick eye wire there that when we close that alleyway, we'll no longer have that easement that are going to give us that portion of the easement back.
Anybody have any other questions?
Make a motion to approve item 15.
Second. So we'll actually do the item 16.
Yeah, yeah, move the B.
Yeah, so that'll, so with that, we'll close that public hearing and so we'll move on to item 16.
Oh, I thought that was the one, sorry.
No. So this one, consider approval of ordinance number 2025-14 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, closing the public use of a certain alley running north and south between property owned by the Noble County YMCA, which is a part of block 42, townsite of Perry to the city of Perry, Noble County, state of Oklahoma, accordance to the recorded plat thereof being a portion of the platted alleyway within said block 42. And as more particularly described in this ordinance, as is shown on exhibit A attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, and declaring an emergency.
So do I just make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-14?
Yes. Second.
All right. Roll call.
Copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Ruck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy. Yes. Item 17. Consider approval of the emergency clause for ordinance number 2025-14.
Second. Copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Ruck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item 18, grand.
Mayor, can I interrupt on this one? I actually got an email from our engineer today out of the airport. He said that we have to go through an FAA process. They've already submitted letters for this, but it's, it's not ready to be approved until we get that process.
Item 18?
18, yeah, the electric line.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yeah, because it's on the airport, it has to be approved by the FAA.
Okay, so 18, we're going to hold off on that one.
Just table it?
Yes.
So could we approve it with the stipulation that it be approved by the FAA first?
Good, yeah. That, that's another option.
Look at it again.
Yeah, I agree. If we're allowed to do that.
That's great. I love that.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve pending FAA approval.
That's it. I'll second that.
I wasn't sure if you were done. I wasn't sure either.
Sounded good to me.
Okay. Copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Ruck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item 19, accept public utility easement from Noble County to access Stone Hill addition.
So Noble County owns a plot of land that we need to cross in order to provide electric to the Stone Hill. They've agreed to give us that. They haven't finalized it yet, but they've agreed to do so verbally and we recommend that, that you guys accept that so we can take it and move when it's, when it's good.
Has anybody bought property out there yet?
No, people we're talking about.
Okay.
Oh, Stone Hill.
Yeah, I had driven out there.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to easement.
No, sorry, like actual.
Yeah, there's been a few purchases, yeah. I think they've sold at least six according to their website.
Okay.
I think they'll sell more. I've had three others reach out and I always tell them to say thing, tell them you have something signed on it.
I would accept the easement from the county.
Second. And copy.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Ruck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item 20. Consider approval of ordinance number 2025-13 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, minch after 15, article four, section 15-402 of the Perry Municipal Code, by the addition of maximum penalties for school zone speeding citations based upon the rate of speed, provided per peeler, savings codification, severability penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Bryce, do you want to briefly take this one?
Yes.
Briefly. Did you hear that word?
We don't have anything in our school zone speeding ticket that provides how many miles per hour. It needs to in order to log points down at the DPS. All speeding tickets are now $200. You're actually giving a little bit of grace here by lowering it if your speed is going lower, but it'll now be associated with a speed. And so when they send the ticket in, they can log points for it. Without this, they can't, right, currently they can't put points on the person's record. So we're recommending that you approve it. And there's points that go on, on all other, you know, traffic violations. Not all, but most of them. Certainly school zone is one that we should be, you know, jealous and guarded and, and make sure that people pay it.
Is there not anything that needs to be from when school is not in session?
That's already handled by the.
The regular?
Yeah, by the ordinance. So this is just inserting these speeds and these ticket prices.
When school is in session. It does, the very first one on speeds less than 200 says, in Disney School Zone on days when school is in session. Are they all on that? Yeah?
Why are we giving a discount? Well, by state law, you can't charge more than $200 for any speeding. So, you know.
In order to have a graduated rate?
No, some do. Some have higher higher fines, but they haven't read the law. It says you can't have a fine higher than two hundred dollars for speeding, so.
So do do the different speed ranges have different points?
Uh. I don't know that answer. I don't know that answer.
Well, the reckless is, Bryce, it does. If you're reckless twenty-five or over, it's gonna get one point higher.
But you'll probably cite it under a different statute.
If you're reckless driving, nothing but speeding.
I move we approve the changes to the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Second. And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodsor?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Item.
Motion on the burdens?
Yes.
Second.
Who did that?
Derek and then Scott.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodsor?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Item twenty-one, any new business?
The only thing I have is Katie Caris shot me right before this meeting and asked if the city would be opposed to them moving the September celebration next year from the second weekend to the third weekend due to some issues with conflicts over Labor Day and the the fairgrounds and some events that they usually have during Labor Day.
That would be in twenty twenty-six?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they wanna get started with booking and advertising and everything they do for that.
So that would be September nineteenth instead of twelve?
I believe so, yeah, third weekend to the second.
Historically, they don't have, we don't have the fair in on Labor Day.
Right.
They changed that around and then and also the parade is always, when the sixteenth falls on a Wednesday, it can usually go either direction, but it's typically after, after, just because Labor Day is always on that and money before.
So we're moving it to avoid Labor Day?
The fair, yes. The other way, the fair is before, I guess, I don't know all that, but the the Fair Board.
Leads up to the parade?
Leads, the Fair Board says they're having the fair from the twelfth to the seventeenth or eighteenth. I don't remember the number. Yeah, that is that is gonna be fine with them. Suppose that goes into the parade beyond the nineteenth?
I think that's fine. I knew we'd all year planned for it.
The fair is moving on.
Why not, yeah?
Probably shouldn't move too.
Yeah, I just didn't, you know, obviously not, growing up here, I didn't have a background of how all events coincided, so I wanted to ask, but fantastic. I'll let her know, thank you.
Now, you don't need a motion, just a green light to go for it. All right, item, any other new business? Is that it? Item twenty-three, receive canvas of bids for Twenty-Fifth Street Water and Sewer Improvements. Award bid to lowest responsible bidder, Lone Hickory Cattle Company, in the amount of nine hundred thirty thousand, two hundred dollars, with the contract time of ninety calendar days. Upon receipt of bonds, issuance of power of attorney, and review and approval of the City Attorney authorized mayor to execute public construction contract.
Yeah, so this is a big project, gone through the the process of, and we got the REAP grant for a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we got some some private funding to help cover this. Went out for bids and the bid actually came in higher, the lowest bid came in higher than what we were anticipating by about two hundred thousand dollars. I've talked to the private donor and they've indicated that they would probably be willing to increase that and cover that cost. But if they don't, the option is we can actually shave back the water line to align with the allocated money that we have for the project currently, which I I wrote this in the in the background. But, um, yeah, I think what we'd like today is for you guys to approve the Lone Hickory to do this with the caveat that we come up with funding either by shaving the project back or getting additional grant funding.
Remind me, Nate, is that between Ditchwich and on Twenty-Fifth Street, where is this work being done?
Yeah, it's being done.
For Twenty-Fifth Street.
Yeah.
North, north, north of Twenty-Fifth Street, okay. And what did we think the bids would be that the nine thirty is shocking to us?
So the, yeah, we thought the bids would be two hundred thousand dollars less. And the reason why is twofold, one, increasing costs, but more, it's actually the scope of the projects expanded as we've worked with the developer, because this project isn't isn't being done with the hope that one day it develops as being done with the developer already having said verbally, I will develop in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. And so we've been working really closely with him, planning how these water lines go and the sewer line goes. And just as as that scope's expanded, the cost has increased. Which really isn't a big deal to this be to us, because the developer and the private donor and I are all in the same meeting, right? So they're aware of everything going on. But there is a possibility that they, you know, turn down the grant that I submitted today, in which case we'd have to just shave back the the project. But we could still do it and still do it successfully, so.
When you say shave back the project, is it we reduce the capacity of the water line?
No, we would decrease the length of the water line. So the water line currently goes further than we actually need it to with keeping in mind that we're gonna do a Phase Two and Phase Three. And so we've just cut that that distance back.
Is that the, on that bid comparison, what's the time adjustment now?
Yeah, so there were, there was actually a bid that came in lower, but we want to get this project done as soon as possible for a variety of reasons. One, because the REAP grant needs to be spent. And so we put in a time adjustment that says, hey, if you come in higher in terms of dollar value for your bid, but you're faster, we'll award you X number of dollars per day that you're faster. So Lone Hickory was actually the second, second lowest bid. But their timeline was much, much faster, therefore they got a time adjustment, which put them in the lead as the the lowest bid. Yeah, great question.
And and we have history with them, correct?
Yes.
They did the railroad. They did the railroad.
Yeah, they do really well. They've done really good work for us. And I should have mentioned, Matt Coe is is available to answer any technical questions that might be over my head. But I just, I wanted to kind of present what we have and see if there were any of those types of questions.
Let's develop those family homes.
And the development right now is slated to be multifamily, I guess.
Multi-family.
Multifamily.
They have a couple of phases and different things, yeah.
Yeah. That would be Phase One. Phase Two is talked a little bit about about families, single family.
I think if we've got people ready to develop the project, we we need to move.
And this is all funded by the grant, correct, except for?
It's free, yeah, it's from two grants, a REAP grant and a private grant.
I mean, we're awarded to Lone Hickory Cattle Company the.
Subject to receipt of sufficient money to to pay the contract price for shaving the money down to budget, is that? I mean, I hate to make your motion, but that's.
No.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So moved.
So, I do have a question real quick. If everything works like you want it to, how quick will this start?
Q one of twenty-six, so February of twenty twenty-six is what we're.
Okay.
And that's the, you're talking the development, not the this project, right?
That project.
No, she's talking about the water.
Sewer line, so. No, we're talking.
She said you gave them a timeframe, they could do it faster.
Yeah, August.
That's when it start or when it finish?
Start, yeah. Yeah, we like to.
August of twenty-five.
August of twenty-five, yes. So we we wanna be done by, the goal was October of of twenty-five to have this finished because of that REAP grant. They're on us. Get it done, get it done. Spend that money. So October of twenty-five, but with this, the bid coming in higher, it might be one month later. So I'm shooting more for maybe November deadline of this year.
But plenty of time for them to start in February.
Right, exactly, yep.
And that money's spent. Sorry, I have to vote in this.
We had a motion, do we have seconds?
Second.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, coffee?
Yes.
Bloodsor?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Item twenty-four, approve First Amendment to the employment agreement of City Manager Nigrid. So this is with our performance review that we had recently and after Nate and I met and discussed different things and we talked about changes that we discussed as counsel to his employment agreement. So Bryce put that together and has that amendment in there for us.
The the only thing that made me giggle on this, in our agenda, at the end of each one of these, there's a recommendation that says approve or consider. Who who puts that footnote in there?
Are you recommending that we approve this?
This one says recommendation approved.
Can I, can I play the fifth on that?
I I wrote it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not saying I'm not forward, I just thought it was kinda humorous. I move we approve the amended agreement.
Second.
Okay. I have a roll call.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodsor?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Can I hurry and interrupt and say thank you? I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item twenty-five, consider convening into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with the paternal order of police law of one thirty-seven, entitled twenty-five, section three oh seven, B two of the Oklahoma statutes as amended.
So moved. Second. And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodsor?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Calder?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
For them.
Yes.
Alright, I'm 26. Reconvene into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
We've gotta sleep it. We all gotta wake up from our nap.
Copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item 27, take any action being necessary after the executive session.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between the city attorney and the attorney for the lodge on their proposed agreement.
Second.
Copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Alright. And now adjourned.
So moved.
Just second.
Now we don't have to have that.
Don't have to do that.
We can just move right through.
So.
Bryce said we don't have to motion.
Yep, you don't.
Oh, no?
No.
Nope. Did his gavel scare him?
You've been doing it wrong this whole time?
I guess so.
You can do it either way.
For years?
Yeah. He said I just had to hit the block.
He just like.
Really? Is that for real?
Yeah, that's for real.
That was a little aggressive.
Not the block.
I'll move if it was a little aggressive.
Next time we'll just check it out for a second.
No, we've got another one to do.
If you're decisive with the hammer. Alright, ready?
Alright.
Alright, let's have our meeting for the Perry Municipal Authority and have roll call.
Copy.
Here.
Bloods 'em.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
Wether.
Here. We've got core item one consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item five, consider approval of resolution number 2025-03 of the Board of Trustees of the Perry Municipal Authority, adopting and approving its fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the stated purposes as contained in the budget, directing its chairman, vice chairman, and trust manager to take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation of this budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item six, approve inter-fund borrowing agreement with the City of Perry in the amount of $218,000 to purchase the P285 wire their paper equipment and authorized purchase for Warren Cap.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
No.
Cold Iron.
No.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher, no. And Wether.
Yes. Item seven, approve first amendment of the employment agreement of city manager Nate Reed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item five, consider approval of resolution 2025-02 of the Board of Trustees of the Perry Facilities Authority, adopting and approving its fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the stated purposes as contained in the budget, directing its chairman, vice chairman, and trust manager to take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation of this budget.
So moved.
I know.
Second.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item five, consider approval of resolution 2025-02 of the Board of Trustees of the Perry Facilities Authority, adopting and approving its fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the stated purposes as contained in the budget, directing its chairman, vice chairman, and trust manager to take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation of this budget.
So moved.
I know.
Second.
Second.
And copy.
Yes.
Bloods 'em.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Wether.
Yes. Item seven.
Good.
Okay, adjourned.
You like that better thing.